Mr. President, members of the board, Ms. Coronal, community members. Today, we're gonna go over our proposed 2526 budget and tax rate. Our agenda for today's budget highlights, property values, proposed tax rate, proposed budget, and/or budget by function. For the 25, here we have historical data for the past five years of the district enrollment and ADA. For this school year 2526, we're projecting an enrollment of 1,339 students, which equals to 66 less students than last year. Our ADA is gonna be at 1,175. This is projected on an 87% attendance rate. We can increase that to 95. That would be almost $400,000 in addition to the district. But right now, it's projected at 87. For property values. Property values for the 2025 school year is 303 million, which is an increase of 5% from prior year. Our compressed tax rate is .5984. Our proposed tax rate for the upcoming year for 25 school years, .7483. On maintenance and operation, on interest and sinking is .5546. This includes 15 cents from disaster pennies on the MNO. Oh, and it's gonna be the same from the prior year 2024. However, just as a reference, on a house that's worth 200,000, because of the upcoming, the increase of the tax exemption to 140,000, that will be a tax only on the value of the house of 200,000 will be only 60,000, which we equal to 781 dollars, which is less than last year, same value, same rate, it's 1,302. Proposed revenue based on the press value, the student enrollment, the tax rate, we calculated our total revenue for the 2526 school year to be 19.6 million, which is almost 1.6 million more than last year. Our biggest revenue for the school district is from the state, which is 14.7 million, which equals to almost 75% of the school budget. For expenditures, we have total expenditures for 20.6 million. Here is already calculating 4% increase, the teacher allotment, the tuition retention allotment, and of course, the 4% increase. This equals to almost 70, salaries equals to 70% almost of the total salary, the total budget, I'm sorry. Fund balance for this upcoming year, for this end 2425, we're projecting to have a decrease of 231,000. We will bring our budget fund balance from 12.7 million to 12.4 million. For the next year 2526, we're projecting a decrease of 1.1 million, which will bring our fund balance to 11.2 million. It's important to know that this can affect the first in the future, because the average of three years is reduced 25%. For three years, it can give us a ceiling, ceiling, great, which means that we can, the highest that we can get is a B. So it's always to keep in mind that we don't go over the 25% ceiling. And so at the end, this is our budget, our proposed budget for the 2526. In total, we have 23.4 million in revenue, 24.5 million in expenditures, which equals total deficit budget of 1,084,000. That concludes the presentation.
Just add something, if we analyze the projected expenditures, and I know that Mr. Hernandez mentioned that it's gonna be 1 million that we're gonna get from the fund balance, but I want you to see it as an investment. If you look at this, I want you to understand where the 1 million dollars is coming from. So obviously, if you go to the first one, which is salaries, from this year, 10.5 to next year, which is this current year, to 12 million dollars. So the 4% that we gave out to our employees is right here across, right? But also, the 3% that we gave last year to our hourly employees will be part of this, because we're carrying the salaries from last year to this year. So the 3% that we gave last year and the 4% of this year has an impact. But not only that, the 2 dollars that we gave to all of our hourly employees is also right here. So we were able to cover it last year, but we're carrying those 2 dollars again for this year, and we're gonna carry it for next year. Does it make sense? So we are investing in our employees. Also, if you go to stipends, last year, we adopted 400,000 dollars. However, in September, we decided, you know what, we need to invest in bilingual stipends, we need to invest in attendance stipend, we need to invest in UIL, and all of those stipends are part of this. So I don't want you to think that those million dollars were overspent. In reality, we invested in our employees. Does that make sense? Thank you.
Tax rate.
Oh, everything is recording here.
All right, we have the public comments. All right, discussion within the board, ladies and gentlemen.
We just need to figure out how to, because it's a...
We're in public. This is for the public hearing.
Public hearing.
We'll have to look at it throughout the year. I mean, hopefully, we do get to the 95%, that will help, but...
And that's one of the things that I've been stressing with Mr. Coronal, that especially attendance, what I've been stressing with Mr. Coronal about attendance is very important that we bring our kids to school, because every kid, you know, it helps us with everything and also to educate them. But it would be nice also to continue recruiting and try to be competitive with IDEA. And also, for those parents that are taking their kids to IDEA, it would be good for them to bring them here so that we can have, you know, well, funds, you know, that are gonna be used for them. And so, and that's something that we need to bring up, which is the 95% attendance.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, probably, Ms. Martinez.
Second.
Second, Mr. Perez, on the first side. Hi, all in your name, motion passes. At this time, we call meeting to order and federal leaders protect the flag for the regular board meeting.
Thank you, Lord, for today. Thank you for many blessings you have brought upon us, Lord. We ask you that you give us the wisdom as board members so we can make the best decision for our students, our administration, Lord. May you continue to guide us in your ways, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Public audience. Ms. Castillo.
Oh, I said for enrollment, what are y'all gonna be doing to recruit students? I know that, like Sanmiento was saying, that that's important, your ADA, you know, your funding stuff. What is it that you're doing or what you're gonna do to, you know, to compete with neighboring schools, especially IDEA? Also, the tax rate, I know that Mr. Honda said something about a $200,000 home is valued at 140, the tax rate is lower or something. Did y'all decrease the taxes or, I mean, how is it that now it's lower? I mean, that's a question, and I know you all can answer. For that, I just got ahold of the agenda, so I don't have any questions, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, please. Mr. Nique, come on in.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I got five questions, but I believe one of them is already taken care of, which was the clock, about punching in for the school district, paying all that money. I just wanted to see if we could get information concerning that. Another thing about the school band uniforms, as an update on that as well. I had an opinion of the coach, something about him just doing one period or something like that. It's just gossip or whatever, but, you know, try to address it as best as we can. Then I got about the police on school property. I do believe it's a good idea, but it's up to you all to figure out a better way, if possible, if you could maybe when they're off duty or, you know, figure something out. If you all are not comfortable in any kind of situation, you all can, you know, come up with a better idea of getting off-duty police officers to secure the facility. As I stated before, to try to get into your school district, it's pretty, pretty secure. I mean, there's really no way you can get into without being let in by personnel or security. Another thing about the bullying, if you had any updates on aligned or, you know, something to help the kids whenever they have a bullying for, which is now that the implement of the phones is gonna be less, hopefully, we can get less bullying on that. And last but not least, on the property. I do believe that the school taxes or whatever paid for that, and I don't think that it's appropriate to be, you know, letting go of so much money. I mean, I pretty much think that you all can come up with something to, you know, use those properties for the well-being of the children. We had a discussion with some gentleman outside two meetings before. I couldn't make the last one, because I had my daughter going to university or whatever. I got so tied up that putting like hands-on training or something, there's a lot of people in the community that can help. I mean, I can, you know, you people know more than I do, but there's a lot of people that are professional that might be able to help you all out concerning that. And that's all I got, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Speaker.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening. I have two concerns. The property, I believe it should be utilized by the school district. We do not know the conditions of the building, the foundation. We don't know, you know, only you guys know. You will let us know. I believe that it is a lot of property, and I do believe that the city, if they really want something new and better for our community, you should start with something new. Don't get me hand-me-downs or anything like that. You know, if you really wanna work for it, work for it and get something new. Don't get something used that you're gonna have to spend money on the long run. That's just my opinion, and I am for a Boys and Girls Club. Thank you for the video. And the second, the police enforcement. I believe we are very, since we live close to the border, we do have a lot of immigration, Border Patrol, DPS here in town. So it is gonna be a lot of money if the school does pay a policeman or law enforcement for here in our school. So I will leave that at your discretion. And basically, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Speaker. That's it, all right. At this time, we're gonna be one district report, Ms. Coronal.
Mr. Board President, members of the board, community members. At this time, I would like to start with a summary of the Basketball Summer League, which was very, very successful. And I do have to say that I'm very proud of this young team, because they approached us and they wanted to come to the board, say some words, and take a picture with you. So at this time, let's give a round of applause to Mr. Samuel Hernandez.
First and foremost, I just wanna thank God for giving us the opportunity to play and represent our progressive community pride. First of all, I wanna say thank you, Alpito, for these jerseys. Now, we need it a lot, like, a lot. And the fact that, the fact that we know that the school cares about us more than anything, that just, that just will makes us wanna play more and support this community and the pride progressive, because we need to change that now. So I just wanna say thank you for that, and thank you all, yeah. Another thing, I know this is off-topic, but about the football team, I'm the QB and whatnot, but I know some person had a question about the coach and why he gets paid more. I don't have a lot to say about that, I don't know much. But I will say that the coach is amazing. Every single one of those coaches care more about us than any teacher, like their kids. And when, you know, they're talking about it, it's bad, honestly, because they care so much about us. And they're putting all this work for us, they're implementing a lot of new stuff, and they're slowing it down, they're doing everything they can. And I just wanna say thank you all for hiring, because they're amazing. Every single one, Coach Vega's amazing, Coach Morales, everyone. I just wanna say thank you all for that. It means a lot, and we're gonna play with pride for progress. Definitely new things coming, and, you know, whatever the score says, just know we're gonna play every down, every play, we're gonna do what we gotta do so we can show that progress will not the underdog no more. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and go Red Ant.
We also wanna say thanks to the coach, DJ Garcia, first time.
DJ Garcia, thank you very much, yes. DJ Garcia has been here since my freshman year. He wanted me to mention him, I forgot. But he has coached, honestly, the new generation. Juice over there, his name is Juice, he's coached Tim up. He's coached mainly all the stars that, you know, had come up, my brother too. Honestly, he's getting the whole family Hernandez at this point. He's coached Ivan, he's coached everyone, so just wanna say thank you. Personal thank you for everyone to Coach DJ Garcia, put his whole time just for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, great job. As you know, last week was our first week of school. I do have numbers, and I know there's concern about recruitment. We started the process of recruitment during the summer. We went to West Laco Bip. We've been visiting different homes here in the community. Up to now, we have 1,261 students enrolled. Compared to last year, at this point, last year, we had 1,268. So the difference right now is seven students, so we're getting there. And we still need the migrant students. Once they come back, our numbers are gonna jump, but I'll keep you posted as we go with the numbers. Also, last week, we started executing the cell phone policy, and I do have to say that we sent a very strong message, and I wanna thank the community for your patience. I know that it was gonna be a drastic change, but let me tell you that it's been a very positive change. We only had three cases district-wide. And as we were doing walkthroughs and we were visiting the campus, I can tell you that at the high school, our students started playing cards. They started communicating more, interacting more with each other. In fact, the principal was telling me, "Oh, it's loud." That's what we want. We want for our students to be socializing with one another. So I'm very proud to say that it is working for Progress YSD. On another note, we had our first-ever golf tournament, thanks to your support. It was an amazing experience. We had a lot of sponsorships. We were able to raise more than $30,000, and we still have like four or five different companies that will send the check. We had to pay, the investment was about $10,000, so we're gonna have a little bit more than $20,000 for our scholarship fund. Once we finalize those numbers, we'll get together, we'll make a plan to make sure that every single cent goes to our seniors. Also, throughout last week, we were having the door decorating contest, and I wanna thank Ms. Armento for the donation. We are gonna announce the winners on Friday. It was a very nice experience. The competition was on amongst the teachers and also the schools. It was great, so on Friday, we'll let you know who got first, second, and third place for the different categories. Also, as you can see, we executed the ID policy. Everybody's, all of the staff members had the ID. We're gonna create one for you, hopefully, by Friday. If you can please submit your picture, the one that you'd like to Lupita, so that way we can create your ID as well. We have the conference Techs EdCon in Houston, September 11. We need to finalize that this week, so if you're making plans to go, please make sure you talk to Marisol. We have pending the strategic plan and team of eight. My plan is to have it together, so once we can coordinate and all of the seven board members can be part of that specific meeting, we'll bring Dr. ET for about an hour to start the strategic planning, and then we'll do the team of eight as well. If you can please let us know, it doesn't matter if it's on a Saturday or if you wanna do it on a regular day, we can start at 5 o'clock, from 5 to 8 o'clock. So think about it, let me know, and we'll regroup. Also, I know we were talking a little bit about bullying. I am very proud to say that this year, we had one school psychologist. Thanks to your support, we were able to hire three more. So we have four school psychologists district-wide, and that is unheard of in many districts, because it is very hard to find them. So this year, we're gonna be supporting not only the bullying situation, but also the emotional component of everything that's going on right now. As you know, there was a situation in one of the Catholic churches yesterday, and we wanna make sure that we are ready with counseling, but also on the safety side. We're working very hard on that. And lastly, we had a Region One meeting last week, and Dr. King said hi, and we got an A on our first report. So at this time, I would like to give a round of applause to our board, our community, our business department. We have the plaque here, so let's take a picture, please. Once again, congratulations on that first report. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
And at this time, we're gonna be to progress the property presentation.
During our last board meeting, we had different conversations about the property. I know our mayor of City of Progresso, Mr. Gamboa, made a presentation with the different goals that they have, and I think this is a very good opportunity to start working together. So I was instructed by the board to do an assessment, so that's the information that I'm gonna present to you today. Purpose review. We will provide the board with a status update on the old Progresso Elementary building. That building used to be the Progresso Elementary, and then it was Central Office. And we're talking about the one that we have on 1015 in Malone Drive, right? We will assess the current assignment and future planning for the facility, and we will collaborate with the City of Progresso to identify funding opportunities, partnerships, and program needs. And as you can see, this is the property that we're talking about. We do have three buildings divided. If you look at it, it goes from Malone Street all the way to Shelby Street. We were analyzing the property value, and we looked at it, and it's a little bit more than 1.5 million dollars. And I put it as part of the report. And then I added another property that we had right next to the west side of Maintenance and Transportation. I believe we used to have a small baseball field there. That one is valued at $120,000. And the reason I added that is just for you to start thinking about just the different properties. I just wanted to add that, so that way you know that that belongs to us as well. Okay, so the current building use and assignment. And I know that this is very important, so that way the community, the school district, and everyone knows exactly what's going on with that building right now. So currently, we have our DAEP center in that specific building, where we used to have the library, that's where we have the DAEP with computers, and it's equipped already. The campus designation, Progresso Elementary, is formally designated as a DAEP building. Now, TEA for this school year has identified that site as DAEP. So we send the information. In fact, when we have the safety audits, that is part of one of the audits that we do for safety purposes, separate and apart from our different campuses.
So it's being used?
It is being used, yes, sir. In fact, for the past seven years, that has been our DAEP site.
Sir, when the DAEP, does it cover, is it just an area of the building or is it the whole land and the building?
That's a very good question. So DAEP would be this building right here. Right now, it would be the second building, right? Right there, I won't touch it. So it would be the second one. That building is utilized for DAEP. Now, it's important to understand the structure of DAEP. So if a student gets in trouble to the level that they need to be removed from the school, they go to DAEP. Right now, we're servicing high school and DTMS. So we do have the division within that building for high school and for DTMS students. We don't combine them, they're separate and apart.
How about the other areas, the land and all the other?
Right now, we're not using that. All we're using is just DAEP, yes. The current function, service students removed from their regular campuses for disciplinary reasons. So as I mentioned, if they get in trouble to the level that they have to be placed in DAEP, we put them there. Staffing is already allocated, so we have a teacher, we have two aides, and we also have a guardian who's armed, and we have him over there. And the reason why is because, obviously, we need to protect those students as well. Facilities are adapted for DAEP needs. In fact, we have a room where the counselor goes and they provide counseling to the students. It's important to mention that DAEP days vary depending on the... It's important to mention that DAEP days vary depending on the reason why they go over there. Sometimes students have 10 days, sometimes students have 45 days. So we have students going in and out. Previously planned future use. Now, this is important, because I had a conversation with all of you at the end of May, the beginning of June, when we met with Region 1 in one of the trainings. And at that time, the district is an ongoing collaboration with Region 1 Services Center to expand regional education opportunities. At that time, the board talked to me about bringing the Region 1 and Dr. King Foundation to start a night school for the dropout students and for those individuals or adults that did not have the high school diploma. So we would be able to create that school to implement the program for our community. The proposal was to establish a regional evening high school for dropout recovery for 18-plus students hosted at Progreso Elementary Building. So at the time, you mentioned to me, you know why it would be a good opportunity. So if we look at the structure, we were planning to use the front part, right? Because the back part is for DAEP. We were planning to use that as part of the Region 1. And the purpose was to provide a second chance for students who did not finish high school. Now, the plan was not only to provide the services for Progreso, it was to open it up for people from West Laco, Donna, Mercedes, and try to create that partnership with Region 1 to bring more people, you know, to get their high school diploma. The first thing that Dr. King asked me was, "Do you guys have a facility?" And that's the facility we presented back in June. Program scope, the proposed regional evening high school would serve students from multiple Rio Grande Valley districts, including West Laco, Donna, Progreso, Mercedes, Santa Maria, and everyone that is close by. Any questions up to now? So during our last meeting, the mayor presented this wonderful proposal. In reality, it's something that will have a very positive impact for the community. And we're talking about the community library, Boys and Girls Club, and to align it with our goals. So how can we align that perspective and work together? And I know right now, the city is requesting the help to get the actual property, because in reality, they cannot go out and look for grants without saying, "Okay, I have this property, and it belongs to the city, so help us out to start working." So I understand why they're going above and beyond to try to get the property, because they need to make sure that they belong to the, or that the property belongs to the city in order to get those grants. So let me talk to you a little bit about the shared vision. The district recognizes that a community library and a Boys and Girls Club are valuable initiatives, and that's why I'm saying I think it's a wonderful idea. Mission fit. Both projects align with Progreso ISD mission to expand opportunities for students, strengthen community partnership, and support families beyond the classroom. And I can tell you that I saw it during the summer. For the first time this year, we expanded our tutorials program. I don't know if you remember, but you gave us the authorization to expand it and create enrichment programs, and we got more than 100 students who were part of that program. So it's something very positive for the community. So the commitment to explore a path forward. So I know that right now, we have to look into the legalities. What is it that we can do? What are our limitations? And it's a long-term goal. But what can we do right now to make sure that we send that message to the community, that we wanna work together and that we wanna create services for the community right now? Explore other facilities within the district that could house a library right now. Now, if you look around, this is a perfect spot for a library. So, once you give us the green light to meet with the city, this can become a library right now. We can start that process right now, working with Ciudad Progreso and opening this building for the community. We could work and order books, and I know the foundation of the goal when it comes to long-term. But if you wanna execute that right now, this is a perfect place where we could open the doors and bring our community as a library. District and city can work in partnership to identify the most practical sites, leverage funding opportunities, and deliver lasting community benefits. Again, we know the long-term goal, but once we sit down, we can do a lot of things for the community together. Share commitment. The district views a community library and Boys and Girls Club as a vital resource for youth and families. These initiatives align with our goals of student success, family engagement, and lifelong learning. Again, I think once we join forces, we can create many programs. Right now, we can focus on this too, but we have a lot of potential to unite the school district and the city. District support in action. Obviously, we wanna explore all of the different properties that we have, and once we have that, we're gonna bring it to you. We're gonna meet with the city to see what is the best fit for this goal. In fact, at our last meeting, we mentioned that Progreso ISD donated the corner where they have the police department and the fire department back in the day, and it had a very positive impact in the community. So this message is for the community. Progreso ISD is not just open to the idea. We're ready to partner, invest, and innovate to make these projects a reality. And then, Mr. Ramirez has the legal perspectives of it. We're gonna take it to executive session once we're ready, and then we'll come out. Do you have any questions, any comments? Of course, Mayor, come on over.
So I just wanna say that the property being valued at $1.5 million based on our school assets, the percentage is about 5%, I don't think that it's feasible for a small district to donate such a big asset. Yeah, I mean, including for future growth, for ADA purposes, you know? So I liked what you said about partnership with the city. That's smart, that's good.
I agree. I agree with Mr. Perez. I feel it's a lot of money, and it belongs to the district, it belongs to the students. I love the mayor's idea, it's wonderful. And I'm glad that we, I mean, we have this available, and it would be great, you know, for us to start that partnership for our community.
So let me just interject right before we continue, because I know Mayor's about to speak also. But on the agenda, we do have the presentation of the property assessment, all right? So I wanna make sure that any discussion about the merits of the matter are withheld for a proper board workshop before we discuss the merits of the matter, okay? But let's try to keep it to the extent of we're talking about the assessment of the facility on the information that was presented.
President Ramos and board members. I just have a, I took a couple notes. Mr. Coronado, right? The first thing would be, as I know Ms. Pina came up here, right, building, if we were to get that building, it would not be, we would probably make a new Boys and Girls Club, right? Probably won't be that old building there, of course. We still have to take a look at it and see and see how it goes with the board, right? They'll be the first things. So for me, I'll ask the board members, right? I guess you guys don't have to answer, almost Mr. Coronado. But when was the last time you guys actually visited the facility? Right, have you guys gone in there? Is it feasible? Investment, $1.5 million. It's not an investment for me or for the community. Or, I'm sorry, for this, it's not an investment for me, it's an investment for the community. It's not for the city, it's for our children, right? For our children to have a place to go after school, so they can play, right? And they also have a library where they can study and further their education away from school. Again, it's not an investment for the city, it's for the community. Something you guys have to understand, it's not for me, not for you guys. It's for the actual kids, the community. That's what we're trying to get to do here, help the youth. Now, DAEP center, all right? I see, and this, again, you guys don't have to answer these questions, but I see this building right here, right? What's, how many people actually work here? This is meant to be a middle school, I think back then it was a high school as well, over a thousand students, I'm guessing, maybe 500, 400, more or less, right? I think, I'm guessing, maybe around 30 to 40 people that would work here. I think you have the capabilities of doing a DAEP here, right, to include a night school, right? Again, I'm gonna ask Mr. Coronado real quick. How many students do we actually have right now in DAEP? Two students. Again, TA has identified this as the DAEP program correct site. Can that be amended? And that's one of the things. Again, the library, the libraries are really good. It's really good right here, we can do a library. But my question is, why now, right? Why now? Why are you guys taking matters right now when we're trying to make that change for the community, right? And everybody has kids here. You have kids here, Mr. Rapito, they go to school here?
I have family here, yes.
So what we need is, we need, we need to start young. Gotta teach them how to play basketball young, young, football, other regs, right? And they need a place to start, right? And we don't have that here for many years. Again, my vision here is to help the youth, and that's why we're here today. Thank you.
Any questions, any comments?
Yes. I just feel like you're resting your idea solely on the school district. You want for us to give up land that belongs to the district. And we're a small district, that's a huge, that's a lot of money. I feel that we're offering you this library to get it started, including light, including water. All you really, I mean, and it's practically ready. I feel like, you know, this would really benefit our youth. I love your idea. I feel that giving away $1.5 million is a lot of money. And if we can get the idea started here, let's see it bloom, and let's work together. I mean, we're offering you a perfect building. I feel, you know, that we don't go tell the city what to do, move your building or move your employees, you know? We have this facility already for the DAEP, and we've been, I know that we have, we had already been talking about the night school since May that I came upon. I know that we had already started talking about it. We wanted to partner with Region 1, and that's, that would be great for our school district and for the kiddos here as well.
I just wanna say something. We're gonna find a solution. Every problem has a solution. We're gonna discuss it in executive session, and we're gonna have a plan that's feasible for the community, for the district, and for the city. There is, and we are gonna plan, and we're gonna talk about it, and something good's gonna come out of this. We promise you that.
We're all on the same page with having a, participate more in cooperating with the community, but we also have to look at all the aspects of what has already been planned also. And I was in here when they planned this, the, I guess what you've mentioned about what's gonna happen in the future. But the collaboration between the school and the city is a good thing. We are doing our best to work together with both. And this is like the mayor said, it's for the students above all. Because, you know, we were all raised here, and I know that a lot of the community people, they want a library. They want our youth to stay out of trouble and do good things for the community of Progreso. And that's why it's important that we listen as well with what the city is trying to do to better our community. And I think, like Yadira said, we need to, we're gonna come out with a positive solution so that we can be able to work with both sides.
Yes, definitely.
Come up with committees. The city can bring a committee, the school district makes a committee. We collaborate and see what's the best option, including the options that you mentioned, and look at the assets, look at the numbers.
And in fact, I wanted to present this to you first. The second part, and once we talk, is that. I mean, I think it's important for the city administration, for the school administration to meet and bounce ideas. Okay, this is, this is the proposal, this is the goal, and work together. And I know that the library and the youth center, or the Boys and Girls Facility, again, it's gonna take a little time, but I think that we can start working together to start servicing our community with that in mind.
Definitely, without taking from the school district that belong, you know, it's for the children, for the future of the district itself. I see that pavilion at the park, I mean, it already has a restroom, all it needs is walls, you know? And that's something that already belongs to the city. There's a lot of land there to, you know, to build on. And of course, we can help. I know you mentioned portables, I mean, that would be great, you know? Where we want to help the community. We want the Boys and Girls Club. We want to work with you. We're just, you know, that's a lot of money that belongs to the district, to the students. But like Yadira said, we want to work with you, we want to better our community.
As far as the funding, there is a grant, it's called a programmatic grant for municipalities, and it, as long as you have an operating facility, there, they'll, you don't have to own it. As long as you have an operating facility, you can get grant fund, funding from grants. It's something to throw out. There's grant, there's different grant writers out there that can help with securing funding.
So, Mr. Ramirez, we'll present to you the legalities during executive session, and then we'll create a plan. I'll reach out to our mayor, and then we'll start working to make sure that, at the end of the day, we're working together for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, we're gonna C1 State Education Program Policies and Procedures Manual, Mr. Coronado. I'm just Mr. Coronado.
Good afternoon, Mr. Board President, members of the board, members of the community. What you have in front of you is the state compensatory manual. I'm just gonna go over a couple pages. There were minor changes in the state compensatory handbook. In page 5, you see the 13 components to, for a student to qualify for at risk. One of the changes that we have the training on September 19th is they're gonna add chronic absenteeism as the 14th, as the 14th indicator. It's not there yet, because we're really gonna go into a training, but we'll amend it after. The next page that I want you to pay attention to is page 6. It asks the board to approve if you want to designate a special criteria for students to be at risk. The 14 components pretty much encompass 90% of the district to qualify for at risk, because it's bilingual, kids who are failing. So in the past, we have recommended not to have an additional criteria, because pretty much the 14 encompass where the students were currently at risk. And then the last one, just because you are planning on budgeting, and just for transparency purposes, I broke down the funding for state compensatory and which individuals are getting paid from state compensatory, and this will be added into the district improvement plan. So you can see the distribution per campus, for paraprofessionals. It is 23, and you might see why ISD TMS having more teachers being paid out of state compensatory, because they have a double block. So what we do is, they are partially funded, so the second block is paid with state compensatory. So pretty much everybody in reading and math is paid. Half of the day with state compensatory and the rest local. Do you have any questions?
Can you explain the double block, just so they know that it's the intervention?
Yeah, so the double block, what it means is if I'm in math, everybody at DTMS takes two maths. You're just required to have one, so they take a double math, everybody in the school, and they have like a double reading, everybody in the school. And we've seen that the scores have increased after having a double block.
Any other questions?
The 14th, right? It's gonna be a given.
It's part of the manual, and those come from the state. Great question.
I make a motion to approve C1 State compensatory education program policies and procedures manual.
I second it.
Motion by Ms. Martinez, second by Ms. Candanos, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against any, most passes. C2 Progreso ISD bilingual education policies and procedures manual.
So the only change that was made in the manual was the inclusion. I just removed the grade levels, because pretty much we're offering dual language to everybody in elementary. I did leave the early exit, as you had mentioned. If any parent wants to opt out of dual language, they will be offered early exit. But at this point, most of the parents have said yes. We will be sending the letter for the remaining 30 parents that we have, and then we're just spending the new to the district. But for the majority of the part, most of the parents have agreed to be part of the dual language, and that's the only change that we have in the manual.
Very good. Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve the Progreso ISD bilingual education policies and procedures manual.
I second it.
Motion by Ms. Martinez, second by Ms. Candanos, all in favor, say aye. All right, I'm gonna say, most passes. At this time, we're gonna C3 E.
At this time, we're gonna C three, E of uh, be local for the instructional resources library materials, S B thirteen.
Yes, uh, Mr. President, members of the board. Tasby sent us a new policy for the libraries and we have Mr. Torres who's gonna be presenting a, a summary of the policy. Mr. Torres is our district librarian.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mr. Torres. Um, I wanna go ahead and go over um, S B thirteen. Uh, it is a new build pertaining to the library. Um, before I do, I just wanna go ahead and do an overview of H B nine hundred, which is a P cursor um, to S B thirteen, right? So H B nine hundred, some of the requirements that the library had to do is we had to weed out any books uh, that were labeled explicit or adult designated. And we could no longer, well, acquire those type of books. Uh, the other thing is parental control. So parents had to have access to the library catalog and they also had to have a challenge process, right? So if they had an issue with a book, uh, they could go ahead and challenge that book in our libraries. Uh, and finally, we had to have some sort of policy in place that included those uh, requirements. Um, some of the definitions that we'll see, so are gonna be library material. Very simple, library materials, anything that's on our bookshelves. It also pertains to any online, um, so such as ebooks or anything online such as ebooks um, that the library provides. Um, some of the uh, words you'll see is like profane content. So that's anything like any curse words, any bad words. Um, also, um, uh, also any indecent content. Um, so anything dealing like with sexual uh, things or um, any inappropriate things. So those are things that are now gonna be defined in the policy. Um, so every district has to prohibit any sexually explicit, vulgar, um, indecent, um, or profane uh, content and any uh, links or Q R codes that are provided in books. Because sometimes uh, these books, they'll have Q R codes or links and then they'll have um, inappropriate websites um, that we may not be aware of. Um, and then we have the policy to adhere to all these things. Uh, SIPA compliance, so SIPA compliance very quickly is just Children's Internet Protection Act. Um, it requires us to block any obscene material, any adult content and any content um, considered harmful to minors. Okay, um, and as far as I know, that's already put in place. Pretty, we have filters and things like that that will filter all that out. Uh, parental rights, so they've expanded parental rights. Um, so again, besides the school library catalog, um, a parent can now uh, go ahead and submit a list of books that they do not want their child to access. Um, and we'll go ahead and abide by it. Um, and then they're also able to uh, view their child's checkout history. Uh, so for example, if someone didn't want their child reading Harry Potter, we can flag it in our system and that child will not be able to check out that book. So they won't be able to have access to it. Um, if for whatever reason they do, uh, a, a parent does decide to have a uh, request uh, their checkout history, we can do that on our system and we have to provide the title, author, genre, and return date. And this is probably the most important thing, uh, which is the uh, rules for procurement. Uh, so now before, whenever we would order, so I myself would order, we would get the books, put them on the shelves, right, as long as they're shelf-ready. Now, um, they have to be school board approved. All books have to be school board approved before we can put them on the shelf. Um, there's a requirement of thirty days. So I would submit the list to Superintendent Coronado and he um, would go ahead and post it online. And then after the thirty-day window, the first open meeting that the school board able to have, um, that's when y'all would go ahead and decide. And again, it's thirty days to make any revisions or any changes that you would want. Okay? Um, and there are exemptions. If we already have books in the catalog and they don't, um, or they don't, um, well, if they're already in the catalog, we can go ahead and um, replace them uh, as long as they have the same I S B number, which is the barcode in the back of them. Uh, challenges, so with H B nine hundred, uh, it was only, so before it was only a parent that had a child in the district that could challenge a book on their shelves. Now it's anyone with S B thirteen. So any parent, employee, resident can uh, file a formal cha-challenge. Um, the dish, so T E A has already uh, sent out a challenge form that pretty much uh, all districts are supposed to use across the board. Um, it was just sent out on Friday. So um, we'll go ahead and get that as soon as possible and we can post it on our website. And if uh, there is a challenge, basically, we will take the book off of the shelf and we'll um, form a committee. And then that committee will come to a decision. But it will ultimately be the school board's final decision on if the book can stay on the shelf or not. Uh, if a book is removed, then we'll just basically discard it, we'll remove it, we'll weed it out of the system and then we'll discard it. If it's retained, so it's kept on the shelf, it cannot be challenged for two years. Uh, classroom libraries, so a lot of classrooms, you have their own library. Even though they're not considered library materials, um, they still have to follow the same standards, right? So again, if, let's say, for example, we weed out or we um, there's a challenge to Harry Potter and it's not retained, right? So it's gonna have to be taken off the shelf. If any um, classroom library has Harry Potter, they will also have to take off their shelves. So it's the same thing for all of us. And then any, so instructional materials, that's anything that's gonna be used in the classroom, right? For instructional purposes, it does not fall under library materials. So in the library, we do have class sets. Yes, they are on our, on our online system, but they're not considered library material. Okay, so they're like away in storage. And that was it. Thank you. Or any questions?
Any questions from the store?
I just wanted to, didn't we approve this or didn't we discuss this previously? No? Maybe was it just textbooks then?
Same as having textbooks. Texts.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. It was, it was similar presentation.
Summary.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? What, I'm sorry.
No questions.
Thank you, sir.
I make a motion to approve the E F B local instructional resources library materials.
I second.
Motion by Martina, second by Mascananos, all in first, say hi. Hi. Most passes, so at this time, we're gonna C four, personal SD teacher incentive allotment handbook.
Hi, good afternoon, board and members of our community. So I'm here asking for recommendation for our T I A guidebook. That's the first thing on the item. Um, a couple of updates on the T I A guidebook. Basically, it's just, we defined the definition of a classroom teacher. That's on page three. And it basically, it's just defined as an educator employed by the school district who teaches for an average of at least four hours each day in an academic or career in technology setting. So that was one of the updates on the guidebook or the manual. Another one was, we included an optional component. Um, in the T I A designation system, basically, we added a ten percent of the designation score will now be based on the overall student performance rather than just student growth. So basically, star aligned more to accountability. We'll have sixty percent will be based on student growth. Thirty percent is based on T tests, which is the teacher's uh, evaluation system. Ten percent will be student performance. Um, item number three on the, the updates on that guidebook would be the expansion to the other areas and that's in page seven. So we expanded into the C T courses, we expanded uh, our advanced placement courses, our interventionist and our resource. And lastly, on the update was just, we updated on there that a teacher must have a minimum of twenty-five students in an instructional setting in order to be eligible for the student growth measures. So basically, if the teacher doesn't meet that criteria, they will not be eligible for the T I A designation. And those are the only updates in the T I A guidebook. Do you guys have any questions?
We're including all core teachers.
All core teachers, yes.
So before the, yeah, I, there was no number of the students to receive this or then, or is, it's always been there, the number of?
There was, it was just, well, it didn't need to be a specific number, but because we expanded to the C T courses and the extra, those we needed to. The regular courses that we do, it was all start testing students and they have a minimum of because they either team taught or anything like that. So we just wanted to clarify because of the expansion.
So you're saying that it's gonna be twenty-five for C T and ten for the core subjects?
Minimum. Ten is inclusion or inclusion self-contained, sorry. Any other questions?
Any other questions? You wanna do C five as well as the T I A, um, or you wanna make a motion on this one, just real quick?
I make a motion to approve C four, progressive SD teacher incentive allotment handbook.
Motion by Martina, second by Miss Acosta, all in first, say hi. Hi, I'm gonna say, most passes. Now we go with the progressive SD T I A expanding plan.
Yes, so we're asking for approval, recommending uh, approval for the allotment and spending plan for T I A. Basically, um, we require, the district requires or is required to spend at least ninety percent of their allotment on teacher, on the teacher compensation on the campus where the designated teacher works. Um, seventy percent of that assigned allotment goes to the designated teacher. Twenty percent is allotted to the student face instructional staff who has supported the designated teacher at that campus. Uh, and then ten percent is set aside for the costs associated with implementing the local designation system and supporting the teachers in getting designated. So basically, we're asking for your approval of our spending.
The twenty percent is for the supporting teacher. Well, if they're team teaching, one gets it and the other one doesn't, the other one gets, how does it work? Can you explain?
So the
Let me explain it real quick. So the seventy percent goes to the designated teacher, the main one. The, the other twenty percent is divided amongst all of the teachers. So at the school, so let me give you an example. Last Friday, when we had payday, those teachers who were not designated at P E C, they got extra five hundred dollars. Because we divided the twenty percent for that. DTMS got five hundred dollars. Uh, elementary, because of the number of teachers that were designated there, got two thousand dollars. And I'm talking about all the reg, the rest of the teachers. And then the high school was five hundred and fifty. But going back, that twenty percent is divided amongst all of the teachers, so they get that extra money.
What about paraprofessionals?
Paraprofessionals are not part of teacher incentive allotment. So this one, this specific money is just for teachers.
But that's, that's by uh, by the state.
It's by state, yes.
Any other questions?
So regardless of how the other teachers did, that they still get that amount.
They're gonna share.
Any of the pop. From the teachers that actually.
So from the designated teachers, that twenty percent goes to all other teachers. And more than anything, uh, well, at, at the elementary, they're all, they're all testing teachers. This is, this twenty percent is going to our resource at that time, our special ed teachers, even our coaches, because they're held responsible, you know, to, to, to support in many aspects. So that twenty percent goes to those particular stu, uh, teachers who are obviously part of the, of the accountability as well.
On the administrative consideration.
I just feel, you know, the teacher that, and I totally agree, you know, that our coaches and our support staff should also get a certain amount, but I just feel I work in West Loco and they get ninety percent. And I did see some of the teachers or that, that left said, we're taking too much. I don't know how you guys feel. I don't know how Santa Maria does it or others.
Santa Maria has ninety.
I just feel like.
Ninety and ten. So ten is for the district, ninety's for the.
Yes, I just feel, you know, for our teachers that are working so hard, so diligently, and I know they all are.
No, she's mentioning the ninety percent of the. Yes.
If I was a designated teacher, I get ninety percent of the.
Yes, which, which I feel, you know, they worked so hard for it. And, and we're, I'm so thankful for every single staff member. I just, uh, you know.
Can we let the teachers decide? Because like, I know other districts do the sharing also, but the teachers are, are in agreeance that everybody else on the campus helps them out, which I mean, I feel they do, everybody's a part of it. Maybe uh, adjust the, the percentage that's being shared.
Five, I don't know.
If, if I may add something, it was presented to the committee for T I A before we brought it to you. So two things to consider. Number one, that twenty percent had helped us retain teachers who are not designated. For in their mind, there are effective teachers who have thought that they want to leave somewhere else because, because they haven't gotten designated here. But that twenty percent has helped us retain that number. And number two, other districts are not paying for uh, benefits. That ten percent that we keep locally, we're using them to pay the benefits that the, the designated teacher should have paid. So in reality, that ten percent, we're using them towards the designated teacher. So they're not getting thirty percent, they're getting something higher because we're paying for the benefits that they should be paying.
The only thing that I do want is I wanna, because what percentage of the teachers were T I A, T I A designated? What's the percentage rate?
We have right now forty-five percent.
Forty-five percent over the whole district?
No, forty-five percent of the ones that
Qualified.
Could be designed.
So that's what needs to grow. Because I went to a training and it said, if this year thirty percent of your whole population of teachers was designated, next year it should be forty, fifty.
And we're gonna get very close this year with the expansion. So the only grade levels that we're pending, it's sixth and seventh grade, which will have N W E A by next year. We're just pending P E, which we already have a plan. Ban, we already have an assessment for, so we're just pending pretty much the electives and those that we don't have an assessment for, which is like four areas.
Because you, you said in the plan, I read it, and it says that you're gonna include S L Os.
Right.
S L Os is for everyone.
Right, we're planning to include S L Os for the unit.
And I was in Santa Maria, everyone gets a C T, coaches, everyone, because we do use S L O. So we use S L Os across the board, but then we do consider star data, VAM data and et cetera. So I think that would be a great way to expand.
And we're looking for that for next year, for all of the ones that we're pending, which pretty much is electives. The only areas we're pending is sixth and seventh grade, social studies and science, which we don't have an assessment for right now. We're looking for N W E A, but we can definitely look into S L Os. P E, ban, art, but pretty much, and, and spent in the unit. Everybody else is gonna be covered this year. So this theory, we're gonna drastically increase.
I like the idea about asking the teachers, I can form a committee, do a survey, bring it to you to see. Because I, I, I do see that perspective. But from talking to the teachers, they also feel like, okay, this is a team effort. Uh, if you give, because right now, the teacher incentive allotment are getting more than five thousand dollars. The, the, the other teachers are getting five hundred. If we go the other route, the teacher incentive allotment might be getting six thousand, seven thousand dollars and the other teacher will be getting fifty dollars, a hundred dollars. So it is gonna have a huge impact to that motivator uh, factor when it comes to the other teachers. But I like that idea. What, what, what do you think?
You need this approved now or no?
We can bring it back. That is true. We, we need to do it before September first, yeah.
Can we do it after September?
So you're saying you had a committee and you talked to.
Well, if the teachers had their input.
They agree.
And they agree.
I think what helped the most to, to paint a picture for the teachers was the extra fifty percent that the, that it's gonna cost. So in reality, what they kind of based it on was if, even if you take that money, it's not gonna, you're not gonna take it. You're still gonna pay the taxes on it and at the end, you know, you're gonna end up just a couple of bucks extra. So that's where, what we really have to, had to do that day at the meeting, because we needed to paint a picture as to what would give us our biggest buck. Um, and ultimately, I think it, it was more because of that team effort. It really has helped to retain the other teachers. They are highly effective. Just because the designation through T I A is very difficult. It is very difficult, the data that is submitted. So as in collaboration, um, especially at the elementary. So as in collaboration, um, especially at the elementary, the elementary has the highest designated teachers, and those are conversations that we have had. But only because the collaboration, the unity is there, they feel okay, it's okay, because it is a team effort. But we did, we did have a committee and we did have a, a lot of the teachers had a lot of questions. And especially those that are not designated and all the CTE, we, we brought in, you know, a variety and array of, of people into the committee and, and they picked our brains. They really did. This has been something that we've, that's been out there before. They've asked. And what we asked them, our business people, was give, paint them a picture of, in reality, are they gonna take this money with them? Yeah.
West Loco did reach out if we were paying for benefits, because no district is paying for the benefits for TIA. It gets deducted from the teacher's check. So we're one of the few districts that's paying for the benefits. Part of it, because we know that the T, twenty percent is going to the rest of the teachers. So it's a give and take. I'm, I'm sure West Loco is not paying for the benefits, because they reached out and asked me, how are you guys paying for the bene-, why are you guys paying for the benefits? I think it's coming out of the ten percent that we get to keep.
Yes, we do. Thank you for clearing that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
I make a motion to approve C five, Progreso ISD Teacher Incentive Allowment Spending Plan.
Motion?
Motion by Ms. Martinez, second by Ms. Armitola, first by Ms. Ay.
Aye.
Again, say name, motion passes. Uh, Progreso ISD Gifted and Talented Handbook?
Okay, that's me again. Okay, GT, just a couple of updates on the GT is that we added the, um, the credit by exam. So students can opt out to, to take an exam and for additional placement. It's called a CBE, and that, we're following state policy. There's an exam that they can take and just move up. It's offered for K all the way through eighth grade, and then some of the upper grades. That's on page eight. And the only other thing was that just our, our design, our program of design is our GT students are pulled out for the GT services. We have a schedule for them. Our high schoolers are able to take advanced placement courses. And also, we are implementing the pullout as well for the high school starting this year. We're using a program called Destination Imagination, and basically there are challenges. We ask for approval of the handbook at this time.
Any other question from Ms. Garcia?
I just wanna say, thank you. Um, I like that fact that you're gonna have the credit by exam. I was surprised you didn't have it before, which the credit by exam, like you said, is from K through eighth. So any, let's say a parent wants to request one, is there gonna be a fee on the credit by exam?
I'm not familiar with the fees.
We'll cover those fees, ma'am.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And also, that's gonna be like if they wanna have their child move to an, uh, upper grade level or-
It's gonna be for moving up a grade level, yes.
I just wanna clarify, okay.
Can we clarify when they're able to do those, um, requests? Like, is it a certain situation or just like, oh, I wanna see if he is able to move a grade level?
No, there is a committee. There is a committee which includes a counselor. Everything needs to go by, through the counselor, and she'll have the procedures and, um, e- especially the committee needs to make the decision.
I make a motion to approve C six, Progreso ISD Gifted and Talented Handbook?
I'll second them.
Motion by Ms. Martinez, second by Ms. Armitola, first by Ms. Ay. Again, say name, motion passes. At this time, we go to child find and child serve agreement between Region One and Progreso ISD twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Yes, Mr. Board President, members of the board, this is a renewal with Region One, uh, through the child find and child serve agreement. Um, it's just renewal, nothing changed. This is for special education, especially those little ones that are three years old, two years old. Um, Region One provides, uh, training for our staff, and we're recommending passing.
I make a motion to approve the C seven, child find, child service agreement between Region One and Progreso ISD?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Martinez, second by Ms. Costa, and first by Ms. Ay.
Aye.
Again, say name, motion passes. Uh, TSTC Program Presentation?
Yes, uh, Mr. President, members of the board, we have TSTC. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mario Science.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Board President, members of the board and community. Um, I just want to introduce myself. My name is Mario Science. I'm one of the Associate Directors of Admission Enrollment at TSTC here in Harlingen. Um, I come to y'all just to hope to foster more collaborative effort. We have some new leadership going on in our, um, institution here in Harlingen and statewide. So we are really aiming to bolster, uh, some collaborations with partners we haven't collaborated with in the past, or those, uh, relationships have faltered off in the past as well too. So I'm coming with you in hopes that we can create a more collaborative efforts and have open, you know, uh, talks and, uh, relationships to build whether it be dual credit pathways, uh, memorandum, mirandums of understandings with your, with your school districts, and utilization of our resources and our instructors, as well to help y'all within many, uh, initiatives, anything you might be having. As far as CTE or anything you wanna do, uh, dual credit, dual credit college pathways rise as well. I think we offer a lot of programs. We have machining, a new plumbing pipe fitting program, a new diesel equipment program, and we're only adding continuously, continuously. So I just really want to come here and bring a face that we are still local, and we are hoping to foster more relationships with, uh, uh, communities that we haven't in the past. So I'm hoping that, uh, not just for your students in Progreso as well and, and ISD, but also for the community. We offer tons of night courses, tons of, uh, GED classes, uh, testing as well for our community partners that can, uh, help y'all advance as well. And although we are located in Harlingen, uh, we offer tons of resources, tons of, uh, of funding, a lot of different ways for our community partners as well, your students to continue their degrees or continue their certifications, um, past what they learned in high school, or if any of you wanting to learn any new certifications and things like that too. Uh, but I really just come here as a face, and I will leave some information for the board, as well as, uh, for you, Mr. Superintendent, uh, to hopefully open those talks, and we'll have, uh, uh, better, uh, better talks in the later as well as developing strict, um, you know, guidelines and get legal involved in that, as far as having dual credit pathways. But I really just wanna come here and just, uh, introduce myself and let us know that we are still here, we're in your backyard, and hopefully we continue to service y'all and improve our service to y'all with the new programs that we are adding. Um, like I said, our newest ones are plumbing pipe fitting and diesel equipment, but we have over a hundred different programs, many done online, many can be done through nights, uh, many done in a year or less, with starting salaries, you know, eighty, ninety thousand now. Uh, we place all of our, uh, students in jobs at about a ninety-five per- percent placement rate with our students. Um, and if we don't place you a certain jobs, we guarantee you tuition refund back. So we'll actually pay the money back. Uh, but we, I just really wanna come here just and introduce myself to you. Um, I will leave contact info as well for our dual credit partners and for, uh, our senior directors enrollment as well, should you wanna create more actual policies and, um, and contract agreements that we may better help our students or the ISD, um, utilization of resources, instructors, different things like that as well too. But thank you all so much for your time, and we hope to continue to, uh, work with y'all in the future, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this time, C nine, uh, MOU with Region One Education Center, Service Center, Adult Education Department?
Uh, this is another renewal. From last year to this year is the same, and this one is representing the ESL classes and the GED classes that we have. Last year, we had around twenty students who took the, uh, ESL classes and about fifteen who took the GED.
Nothing changed.
The, the MOU, no.
All right, any other questions?
No.
So can, can this, I see integrated education and training workplace literacy. That's like, uh, I mean, that is career training. Is that part of, uh, of what they're offering? Have, is that part of the Dr. King's?
No, this one is separate and apart. This one is solely Region One. In fact, they send the actual teacher to teach the ESL class in GED.
Okay. Okay, okay.
The region, uh, the Dr. King, uh, initiative just started this year. So they, I think they got Valley already. What was the other one? PSJ? It's already started this year. The one that we were talking about-
Partner with school districts.
With school districts to, uh, in, in fact, something that I did not mention, and I'm just gonna say it, and I know I don't, I, I don't mean to get out of the agenda item, is those, uh, adult students will count towards ADA. So if they come from West Loco, that's, we, if we get thirty students, that would be added to our, our enrollment.
And then also, it would help, remember we had talked about back in May, it would help like all those kids that drop out, they count against us. And if we can ever get, if at some point we can bring them back, then that gives us points again for our rating.
For the GED.
And that's why we, that's why I had hooked up at that time, because that's really gonna help our rating as well.
Part of accountability.
Yes.
So this one is just for ESL and GED.
Yeah, we need to look at the MOU, because it says integrated education and training.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll tell them.
So, so through the, the Electoral Apprenticeship Program that, that I run, I work with Region One, uh, with Dr. King and Yolea Nowa, she runs the, actually, she runs this Adult Education Department, Allen. And that's why our MOU, our MOU that we have is very similar.
And it has that specific-
But that's what I'm saying, it has that specific wording, and it's for career training, CDL, uh, medical assistant. See, like, they provide those classes, is what I'm saying, that career training. So if, I mean, if it can stay and we-
Yes, I was gonna say that, let's leave it like that, and then we just expand it. I'll, I'll talk to them to see.
And I mean, it does say, uh, a suitable facility. We have a building there that we can use.
That would be great.
Any other questions? So I guess we'll go, we'll go to prove.
Yes.
I make a motion. I make a mo-, a motion to approve the memorandum understanding Region One Education Service Center, Adult Education Department?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Martinez, second by Ms. Costa, and first by Ms. Ay.
Aye.
Again, say name, motion passes. Uh, Senate Bill ten for the display of thinking management in public classrooms.
We talked about it, uh, during our last, uh, board meeting, and I was able to find very nice paper. In fact, you, you gave me the authorization. It's, uh, a hundred for three forty-nine. We have a hundred and forty-four classrooms, and, and the recommendation is to buy two hundred, uh, so that way we can have them here. Uh, all I need is just authorization to go out and buy. It'll be less than eight hundred dollars.
How many, how many did you say, two hundred?
Yes, order two hundred. And I put a picture there of how it looks.
The second one, right? Second picture?
Yes, second picture, yes.
I make a motion to approve C ten, Senate Bill ten?
Motion by Ms. Martinez, second by Ms. Costa, and first by Ms. Ay.
Aye.
Again, say name, motion passes. At this time, we go to City of Progreso Police Department, MOU.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the board, if you turn to D one, I put there the memorandum of agreement. This one is reflecting for police officers, but if you go to the third page, it reflects the value of, uh, or the cost of, of every police officer. And if you look at the expense, plan is to pay twenty dollars an hour from the city's perspective. Eighty hours, bi-weekly, on a yearly basis, they would spend forty-one thousand, six hundred. However, they also added the transportation and the equipment. The yearly value would be a total of sixty-two thousand, four hundred, uh, dollars. My suggestion right now, the recommendation, because I know we were going back and forth, we needed one, we needed two, we needed four. The recommendation would be to, uh, give the authorization to the superintendent and the attorney to negotiate with, with, um, City of Progreso. I was able to talk to the county. I, I know that was one question. Uh, I talked to West Loco and I talked to IDA as well. IDA is paying, uh, fifty-five dollars an hour for the office, which was very expensive. Uh, constables, they were charging more or less about fifty dollars, so i- i- it is, it is a good price. Um, as Mr. Hernandez presented right now, based on the budget, I just need to go back, check how much money was allocated. And, and if you give me the authority, along with the attorney, we'll sit down, uh, with the city manager and negotiate, um, the MOU.
Just wanna also add for your, your sake and your community's sake, right now you are in compliance though. Even though you don't have this, you are in compliance for the school guard. So this is not going to help you reach compliance. You're in compliance, this would be additional.
Can I say something?
Yes, fine.
Well, I know that we're in compliance and, uh, but I don't think there should be a fee for safety. I think that the more security the, that we have, even though it can, i- it will cost us, what they have said, I think the, it's a good investment. I think every family would want their child to have qualified police personnel in the campus after what happened today, and that's what really convinced me that this is good. Um, because if, I don't have children, but if I had children here, I would want a law officer here. Security guards, my respect for them, but I think that parents here would rather feel more secure if there was a law enforcement person now here.
Definitely. And, and also, and also the proximity that we have with the police department is, is great, so, um, yes.
And the math calculations, because I, I did all the math. We have a hundred and eighty-seven days, school days, and then summer school. So really, they calculated like an excessive amount of days, so it seems like a lot. So I know it's gonna be much less. And like, you're gonna negotiate and you're gonna be able to fix all of that. So I know if we give that authority, you'll be able to, to present the real picture. Here, it's fifty-two weeks. And we don't have fifty-two weeks of instruction, so it's gonna be much less than what's presented on the state.
Yeah, no, and, and, and this is just, uh, the, the way this started is, because I, I started talking to the police department back in May, when we were talking about creating our own police department, and, and also the whole situation that happened, obviously. Uh, so yes, i- it is a good thing to have police officers here and to send the strong message that our students are safe in our, in our school district. So yes, definitely. Um, obviously, if you give me the authority, it's easier for us to go back, check, check the numbers, to see, you know, if they're gonna be here eight hours, they're gonna be here six hours. Uh, you, they, they're gonna go to the city at this time, they're gonna come back over here, so, uh, the recommendation would be that.
So, so it's total of two hundred and fifty thousand or a hundred and eighty-seven days?
No.
No, 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 the way, the way it's set up here, it would be the fifty-two weeks, like year round.
Year round.
Yes.
Well, we, what do we need them for in the summer?
That, that, that's the thing, that's why I'm saying-
Christmas, spring break.
Iron everything up.
Yeah. So under House Bill three, it states that we are to have security, armed security officers, right, which, which we're already doing. It doesn't say officers, right, or, because there are third-party security companies that offer the same service, that have the same certifications, the same, uh, trainings as police officers for, for less price. So, for example, I did some research, and they can charge from twenty-four to thirty dollars an hour for the same, the, the same, uh, security measure.
The, the only thing that I see, I capito, I'm sorry to interrupt, is like, the money is gonna stay in the city, and it's our same tax dollar. So we keep them here. It's like a circle, we're giving back to our own community. So that's the only reason that I would go, and then the proximity.
Looks, yes, because we have the police department here. Any, any situation happens, they're right there. I mean, we're right, we actually donated the, the land for it, because we, in the future, we plan to cooperate with, with the law enforcement and, and to have faster access if anything happens. So I think it's better we keep it.
We'll, we'll talk to them.
Well, that's my opinion.
Definitely.
Fireing out the numbers.
And, and I, I do wanna say that, uh, I was doing walkthroughs, and, and I've seen Mr. Vernal very, very active district-wide. He's at the high school, he goes to DTMS, he's, he's been going to every, every campus. Uh, so, uh, I do wanna say that he's doing a great job.
Right. At this time, I make a motion, uh, to give authorization for the superintendent to negotiate on the price for the, for the, for the PD.
Second.
Motion myself, I will second by Mr. Perez, on the first, ay.
Aye.
Again, say name, motion passes. We're gonna approve the bus arrangement, sir, please?
Yes, sir, we, uh, the district went out for proposals for, uh, bus cameras. We received three proposals. The lowest one was, uh, Angel Tracks, twenty-seven thousand, four twenty-eight. That's for, in, they will include nine buses. However, our budget right now, because we're paying through, it's not local funds, uh, that was my mistake, it's title, it's through a federal programs, the saving technology grant, we only have twenty thousand right now. So we would cover only about six to seven buses.
And the remaining?
We're gonna do it next year, following year.
What, what was the, what was the, the funds?
Twenty sev-, twenty thousand.
Twenty.
So we have remaining funds right now.
And we can't find other funds to cover the extra seven thousand?
We can go through-
I mean-
Fund balance.
Safety, I mean, the buses are also in-
And how would you choose which ones to put in?
We have nineteen buses.
And, and we, we had this conversation last week.
Nineteen.
I met with-
This is not even-
Remember when I presented? So it's gonna, we're gonna finish the year September thirtieth, and then the new year is gonna kick in. So by September thirtieth, we'll be able to buy additional cameras. So you're just waiting for the new funding to come in.
So let's just wait on the budget cycle, so that way we can-
We can start already with that.
We can start the process of getting the other ones, yes.
Yeah.
You didn't explain yourself.
I was supposed to.
All right, that's my- All right, um, I need a motion.
I make a motion- I make a motion to approve the bus ratings, RFP.
Motion by Ms. Martinez, second by Ms. Costa, I, I, I'm against any name, motion passes. At this time, uh, review and approve the copy of RFPs.
Sir, we went out for, uh, proposals through the purchasing co-op. We received two proposals from Xerox and Copy Graphic. Uh, on the monthly cut for Xerox will be seven thousand six fifty-three, which is about the same price that we're paying fourteen dollars less than we're paying right now, right now.
Who do we have?
Xerox.
Oh, Xerox.
Sir, but I know when I was here, we had a lot of problems with the, with the copy machines. Is there, is that still an issue for our campuses?
We, uh, we did campuses, uh, they did say like, as long as they give us new machines, new equipment, in which they will, they will give us a new equipment.
It comes out to ninety-two thousand dollars a year. Is that like standard?
Yeah, that's the lowest. That's the low, as you can see, Copy Graphics comes out to fourteen thousand a month.
Yeah, it continues.
So they are going to provide new machines?
Yes.
Yes? And it's already in the budget, right? We said, it's a little cheaper now?
Yes.
I think we had asked last time that if the office, uh, the, the people were fine with it, the employees, and I think they had said yes, right? So I think.
As long as we get new machines, that way our staff isn't having that problem.
Is, is Xerox, uh, on a year-to-year basis or is there like?
No, it's a thirty, um, right here, thirty.
I know Copy Graphics is.
Thirty-nine, thirty-nine, uh, months. The term is we're going to be for thirty-nine months.
Oh, yeah, thirty.
Any other questions? Motion by Martinez, second by Costa, I, I, I'm against any name, motion passes. D four concerning possible actions authorizing the superintendent to ensure the contract agreement of valid insurance services, the top to serve and perform, uh, improvements.
Mr. President, members of the board, uh, the company, Valiant came here last, uh, during our last meeting. Um, I talked to Mr. Hernandez and in reality, our electricity contract finishes until two thousand thirty. That, that's, I mean, we're locked in. Actually, we're, we're, we're paying very, very.
Low.
Low. I mean, I think we're the lowest, uh, through, through the valley.
But what's?
Uh, so in reality, we would have to go into this only if we want to give the community, um, the access to them. I, I think they presented this right here, friends and family residential, residential program.
The electric bill would be really low for the families.
Yes, um, and, and, and they would create commercials to, uh, u- using our football, uh, screen and things like that. However, I talked to, uh, the representative and we need to make one, one step. Uh, so Mr. President, I would like to table this item, bring it back to you and to make sure that it says there that it's going to be for the friends and family residential.
Yeah, not for.
I mean, in reality, because they, they won't be able to do, we, we, we have the electricity locked until two thousand thirty, so.
Okay. So the partnership, i- i- it's at no cost. I mean.
It's a no cost, yes.
All for the most part.
It, it's, it's a no cost.
So then what they want to do is use the school district to feed the community?
Yes.
To get access to the.
To get access to, to the community. Yes. Uh, they're like the middle people, right? Try to get, uh, a lower rate comes to electricity.
I think they had said, if I recall correctly, because I, I was like, wow, I think like six, ten versus the, I think right now I pay like twelve and I. Some people pay like twenty-five.
I mean, it's not going to be no cost. I mean, we're just bringing back.
Would that bring up our bill for the.
No, you're not, no, no, you're not good.
We, we need one more step because they're part of a co-op, so we need to do a resolution with that co-op to open the doors for them to come in. Uh, or this family and friends program. So I'll bring it back to you. And, and I want to add a, a list of districts they're working with. Bring it to you because they, they just sent the, uh, actual proposal, but I do want to see what districts are working with them.
Perfect.
All right. At this time, I make a motion to table item, uh, D four.
Second.
Motion, uh, motion by, motion by Ramos, second by Ms. Flores on the first eye, I, I'm against any name, motion passes. At this time, we go to cash disbursements.
Is the total cash disbursement for the month, month of July was three hundred and fifty-three thousand nine seventy-five with twenty-three cents. This doesn't require approval, it's just for your information.
I do have a few comments on Johnson Controls Firearm for the high school. What, what was, what was the, like, what was the repair on that on page two of the report? For thirty-nine thousand, thirty-nine thousand nine oh six, that's fixed fire alarm at high school.
Yep, um, remember we had, um, we brought that bit back in.
Oh, okay.
Proposal back in, remember.
Yes.
They just finished the, the project.
They just finished the project.
On page four, what is cybersecurity, cy- uh, cyber soft technology? I'm sorry.
I believe that's the one that give us a training, right, Mr. Priscina? The cyber, cyber soft technology.
It's only nine hundred and ninety-five dollars per year, but.
Mr. Priscina?
Yeah, right. It is the online training for all the staff on cybersecurity.
Then on page, also page four and page seven, Amazon Capital Services.
I was going to question that. Hey, order from Amazon.
They, they have a business account on Amazon.
They do also.
So it's, uh, supplies?
Yes.
Supplies for teachers.
And, uh, right on this one was, uh, Korean technology, um, um, technology supplies and, and, uh, campus administration.
Who oversees that account or who orders from that?
We, we, uh, we, we gave access to all the campus secretary, but I, I, I do the final approval.
They go through the same PO process.
They have to have a, a purchase.
We, we don't have a credit card.
That's all right. Cash disbursements. All right. Awesome. All right. We go to the investment report.
Is the total investment is ten point six million, total current, current earnings is thirty-nine thousand, which bring the total balances of July thirty-first, ten, ten point seven million. This one does require approval.
Motion by Ms. Martinez, second by Ms. Costa, I, I. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're, you're okay. Uh, have we looked at, at other, at other, uh, investing options?
Return.
Other banks, other, I know, I know like Falcon Bank had like five point four, uh, interest.
Not, not this year. The last time we did that was last year and, uh, I think the closest was Lone Star National Bank, but, but the one that we got this, uh, was it with, with Tasby?
Uh, yes, that, this is, this is Tasby, yes. Uh, Tasby Investment, not Lone Star Bank. There might, Tasby managed a, a, a pool, basically.
What is the, so I see on Lone Star is four point three one. What's the Texas Trust, the Texpool?
The, the what?
The, the percent interest, the IRA.
That question is not here, but I can, I can bring that information back.
Okay, thank you. That, that's all I have.
Right. Tax collection.
Is the total tax collection today is three point three million. That's, um, well, eighty-nine percent collected compared to last year of eighty-seven percent. It require approval, yes.
What are we at right now, Juan? Huh? What are we at right now?
Eighty-nine percent.
Any questions on the tax collection?
I make a motion to approve the tax, tax collection.
Second, motion by Ms. Martinez, second by Mr. Perez, all in first eye, I, I'm against any name, motion passes. Budget update. Do we have a budget update?
Yes, sir. Um, this is the final budget update, so we do require an approval. We have total revenues of twenty, twenty point four million. Total expenditure of twenty point seven million, which we're bringing our fund balance to, um, a deficit of two hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Questions on the budget update?
Is this report on, uh, on cash basis or accrual basis?
Cash.
So then our year-to-date is negative nine forty-three?
Oh, two thirty-one.
Two thirty-one.
Two thirty-one, zero fifty-eight.
We gave to, we gave so many. We got a lot of races. And then the.
Yeah, let me refresh that. We do have some, you said, we have some accruals at the end of the month and some, uh, revenue pending, uh, when TA does the final settlement.
Any questions?
So how are we going to get out of that negative?
This year, on our last event, we're closing the year.
Now we're closing the year.
Juan, I have a question. So the, every department has like a running balance, like how much they have and how much they.
Yes, every campus, every department.
How often do they get it?
A what?
How often?
How often do they get it? It's like, they can access that, it's like.
And it's every department and every school.
Every department, every school.
And I have, uh, bi-weekly meetings with finance. Uh, I, I usually ask for that. We evaluate it. If we see that somebody is overspending, right away.
No, what?
Make a motion to approve the budget update.
Motion by Ms. Martinez.
Second.
Second by Ms. Costa, I, I, I'm against any name, motion passes. At this time, accept the certified totals for the Alamo County appraisal district.
It's the total certified, uh, price value for the district. The next tax, net taxable is two hundred and three million. So we're requesting the approval of the certified totals.
What's the total?
Three hundred and three. Millions, yeah, billions.
Many taxes, daddy.
Yeah.
Thousand nine hundred.
Three hundred and three thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight.
Three point nine.
Questions from Mr. Hernandez? No, all right.
I make a motion to, to accept the certified totals from the Alamo County appraisal district.
Motion by Ms. Martinez.
Second.
Second by Ms. Flores, I, I, I'm against any name, motion passes. Accept the, the revenue tax rate, the non-new revenue tax rate.
New revenue tax rate will be, not new revenue tax rate will be one point thirteen and the border approved tax rate, uh, will be one point twenty. The one point three is basically will generate the same revenue as last year. We are proving a one point thirty twenty-nine. That's why when, when you do the motion, it's going to say, even though we're not increasing the tax rate, it's going to say increased tax rate by fifty, uh, percent.
Oh, I have a pa- page-long motion. I can read it. One of you can just say motion or I can give it to one of you to read.
It's on the, it's on the next one, uh, on the, yeah, this is just to approve the, the non-new revenue, the non.
Any questions? Six. No, no.
I make a motion to approve, you have six, accept the non-revenue tax rate, order a pool tax rate.
Motion made by Ms. Martinez, second by Ms. Costa, I, I, I'm against any name, motion passes. At this time, we go to F seven, resolution from making disaster funding and setting the tax rate for the twenty, for the year twenty twenty-five.
Yes, sir. This is the resolution proving the disaster pennies and the tax rate. Uh, and you have the motion in front of you?
Sure, I can read it and then one of you just say motion as legal. So administration requests a motion that the board of trustees adopt their resolution as presented, making certain findings under Texas Education Code subsection twenty-six zero forty-two E concerning setting the maintenance and operations and debt service tax rates of the Progreso Independent School District for the year beginning January one, twenty twenty-five and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Further move that the district's maintenance and operation tax rate on the one hundred dollar valuation be adopted and levied for the tax year beginning January one, twenty twenty-five and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five in the amount of zero point seven four eight three on a one hundred dollar valuation payable in lawful currency of the United States for the support and maintenance of public schools of Progreso Independent School District. And that the district's debt service interest and sinking fund tax rate on the one hundred dollar valuation be adopted and levied for the tax year beginning January one, twenty twenty-five and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five in the amount of zero point five five four six on the one hundred dollar valuation payable in lawful currency of the United States for the payment principal and interest payments on approved and issued bonded indebtedness of the Progreso Independent School District. This tax raised will ra- will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. The tax rate will effectively be raised by fifteen point zero nine percent and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on one hundred thousand dollar home by approximately zero, zero cents.
Any questions? And that's it, guys? No? All right. Motion by Ms. Martinez, second by Ms. Costa, I, I, I'm against any name, motion passes.
Just put reference, just to put reference on, uh, approximately zero, zero dollars and zero cents will be increased.
That is correct. And the only reason why it has to read this is because property values went up, so your money goes up even though you're not raising.
Perfect.
Perfect. All right, adoption on twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, uh, budget, general fund, CMP and debit services.
We're requesting the approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget for general fund, foot service and debt service.
Let's do it. Any questions? Motion by myself, Mr. Ramos, second, second by Mr. Perez on the first eye, I, motion passes. At this time, it's, uh, seven forty-six and we go to executive session.